Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, August 26, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Sarah Pelk. The list of legislation up for preliminary approval can be found on the website at Thank you and have a great day.
So, good morning. Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, August 26, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. You will be given three minutes. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Aikuhana Halmarquina. I see you in the meeting. You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. O C O greeting. In la kesha le kiin. I greet you each in the great spirit of my noble warrior ancestors, whom shoulders we stand upon. The Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I'd like to express the overwhelming joy that I feel as I reconnect to my ancestral lineage. Yesterday, I was listening to your proposal and proclamations for someone who discovered that they themselves were gay. Well, I would like to interject. The overwhelming evidence of discovering that you are an Indian and that the land that is now known as the United States of America, which "of" is a substantial connector of America. America is the land of the indigenous people, the Aboriginal indigenous people of America. And since that is so, we stand in direct opposition to any and all attempts to colonize our land, to continue to colonize our land. We, the Aboriginal indigenous people, are connecting, reconnecting to our ancestry. I remember when my grandmother, as a teenager, told me that we were Indians. But because of the public lies that were told in public education, I couldn't connect. I had cognitive dissonance and I wasn't able to make that connection because of the images that were in place of the true Indians of this land. And so, when I began to do research as an adult, oh, what I would find would amaze me. The Columbus letters, he's in the news a lot lately, as being the discoverer of America. What a lie that we all know isn't true, which is why you all have information before you to tear down his statues. There's an acknowledgement, House Joint Resolution, Number 3, which is an apology from the United States to indigenous people. It acknowledges the years of official depredations and ill-conceived policies and the breaking of covenants by federal government regarding us, the indigenous Americans. They apologize on behalf of the people of the United States to all Native people for the many instances of violence, maltreatment, and neglect inflicted by the United States and their citizens, expressing the regret of the United States for the ramifications of former and current offenses committed.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Steve Stamey.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Stephen Stamey. I have lived in Pittsburgh all my life. I have lived in the Friendship Area and own my home here for the last 39 years. I'm calling to complain about the way I have been treated. I don't... The local friendship is... Friendship groups, so-called citizens groups, are planning on painting 50-foot clowns in front of my home and apparently the city has signed off on it. When I bought my house here, this area was all whorehouses and crack houses and my house was a whorehouse. Many people helped to clean up the area because of the crime and the graffiti and yet people who have not lived here and don't live here are proposing to paint graffiti on the streets in front of my home. We had put in stop signs where there were none, worked with the city and city council representative, Bill Paduto, at the time, to widen the streets and intersections to allow the ease of traffic, make it safer. There has not been an accident on this corner for 30 years and that was several ambulances that smashed into each other before we fixed the streets. I am the one homeowner who owns the piece of property that overlooks this piece where the city is planning on painting clowns. This is just graffiti. Within minutes, it'll have mustaches and penises drawn on it and I have no doubt. The only other person that is impacted by this is a school teacher named Mark Benler who lives across the street from me. This piece of property that the city wants to paint lies between us. Nobody bothered to talk to either one of us. Nobody bothered to contact us. He and I do not want this here and I object that no one in city government bothered to ask me if I wanted 50-foot clowns. We both have our life savings invested in our homes and we would lose a considerable amount of money, which the city would have to repay us and in like turn. The only other person around here is a bed and breakfast across the street from Mark and that person is... He rents out property to other people and runs a little hotel. What has been proposed here is nothing less than graffiti. There is no such thing as asphalt art of any kind. I'm an artist and I have never heard of asphalt art. Picasso did not paint clowns on street corners in asphalt. Maybe the $25,000 to $75,000 that the city would be spending to do this...
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Axteau. Is John Axteau with us? I do not see him. Our next speaker is Mary Coleman. I see Ms. Coleman. Ms. Coleman, you're currently on mute.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Mary Coleman and I have lived on 43rd Street in Lawrenceville for 26 years. I'm a member of Lawrenceville Stakeholders, a nonprofit historic preservation group. I also owned Gallery on 43rd Street, which I operated out of the first floor of my house while I lived on the second and third floor. I did that for 24 years. I closed at the end of January 2019. I am calling today concerning the Ewald House. The Historic Review Commission deemed the house of historic significance and city planning also came to that conclusion. Lawrenceville received the National Designation of Historic Places last year. The Ewald House and the Maori Addison House, which you granted the city historic designation recently, both contributed to that national designation. I don't understand how 186 Home Street, the Ewald House, cannot get the city designation. It is equally contributing. The zoning board granted the developer all variances, but Lawrenceville Stakeholders appealed and won that appeal. The developer, on August 14th, filed an appeal to Commonwealth Court. We are opposing that appeal. I ask you to please put the decision of city historic designation for the Ewald House at 186 Home Street on hold while the appeal is being heard. Please don't vote against the designation. There is an interested buyer who testified before City Council at the last meeting before your recess. She is willing to pay the Rupert's their asking price and restore the house. It would be a welcome project to the neighborhood and residents would be most grateful. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beth Rupert. Is Ms. Rupert with us? I don't see Ms. Rupert. Our next speaker is Robert Bay. Is Mr. Bay with us? I do not see Mr. Bay, therefore that exhausts our list of registered speakers. We will now move on to our Standing Committee Agenda and will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. The Call Hill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
There.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. DeValle Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our first item of today is actually invoices. We need a motion to approve our lengthy list of invoices.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose?
Abstain.
One abstention, so the invoices are approved. That moves us on to interdepartmental transfers, which we do have, so we need a motion to approve those.
A motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Transfers are approved. Next, we have P cards for approval. Need a motion on the P cards?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? P cards are approved. Takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman O'Connor. We have one deferred paper bill, 145.
145, ordinance amendment, ordinance number 36, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article III Dog, Cat, and Other Animals by Repealing, Chapter 639 in its entirety and adding a new Chapter 639 for cajillion species and red-eared sliders prohibited in the keeping, sale, exchange, adoption, exchange, or transfer of such animals in the city.
A motion to hold 12 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second. That was your request, sorry.
I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor of the 12-week hold?
House and Kraus would like to talk about that.
Look, trust me, let me just comment quickly. We've not abandoned that in any way and I'm in constant communication with different animal rights organizations, which is right now, council has a rather full agenda and I'd like to give the council the liberty to tackle some serious issues we have before. Not to say that this isn't.
Thank you, council. We appreciate that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? The bill will be held 12 weeks. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Carquill. We have one supplemental paper bill, 628.
Bill 628, Resolution Granting unto the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. Your successors assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 612 Smithville Street in the 2nd Ward, 6th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Very, very, very brief discussion. We are in the process, we at the Carnegie Library, in the process of renovating our downtown location. This is the identification sign that will be different than what it has been in the past. There is a photo that is in your packet that you can see firsthand for yourself and I am asking for the unanimous support of council to move this ahead so that we can continue with our renovations.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our deferred paper, which is Bill 482.
Bill 482, Resolution Granting unto 1505 East Carson Street LP. Your successors assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 1505 East Carson Street in the 17th Ward, 3rd Council District.
Motion to hold 12 weeks.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Bill was held 12 weeks. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one supplemental... One supplemental paper, Bill 645.
Bill 645, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances at Certain Site Known as the Shrine of the Blessed Mother, Located off Wakefield Street in the South Oakland 4th Ward.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing or should I say Zoom meeting?
Yep. Yep, second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Will be held for cablecast public hearing. Two deferred papers, Bill 198.
Bill 198, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zone-In Code Article VI Development Standards, Chapter 914 Parking, Loading, and Access in Order to Eliminate Minimum Parking Requirements for Single Family Attached Dwellings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This bill also needs help for...
For a public hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking at... I must have the wrong agenda because I brought the one that Luis and I only had one bill on it. But anyway.
Yep.
So I just couldn't see what the text was. So what is it? Motion to hold for...
Public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing, okay.
Yep, second.
Zoom meeting.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Bill will be held for a public hearing. The next bill is the Ewald House Bill, Councilman Wilson, Bill 236.
Thank you.
Bill 236, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances at Certain Structure Known as the Ewald House, Located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 9th Ward.
Motion to withdraw.
Need a second?
A very brief discussion.
Please.
I'm just curious why it has been asked to be withdrawn.
So, I'm happy to discuss. There was communication. It was yesterday and we've also received a briefing from law. Willing to discuss, willing to bring law to the table and, you know, essentially, I don't want to get this wrong, so I would really appreciate if law could come to the table and explain.
I don't need it. I was just curious, more than anything else and we could always... I could always have the conversation offline with law.
This matter is being contested in court. We cannot automatically... It cannot be automatically approved even if we don't act on it because it is being contested.
Gotcha. I'm fine.
We have to withdraw it.
I'll second on the motion to withdraw.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Gross.
I'm sorry, I have been frantically fighting with my technology here at my desk. It was a very complicated matter to get me on. I apologize for just jumping in here. We are still in discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. May I?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I read the law opinion last night. I think we all received it about 8:15 last night by email and so I'd been giving it some hard thought as well. I have a kind of ideological position here, I'm just going to admit it. We struggle so much as a... I'm sorry, Brenda, you're on my screen. Am I still kind of talking? Can everybody hear me and see me? I've struggled so many times and we as a body have struggled so many times of being preempted by state law, by Commonwealth Court, throwing out legislation, you know, being challenged by litigation to Councilman Lovell's Source of Income Legislation, by Councilman O'Connor, my co-sponsored paid sick leave legislation. We've struggled with state law about gun legislation and we have... It's like our powers as a body are under attack, really, are being reduced all the time. And this situation is about the city's land use authority, which is really the core authority, both public safety and land use are really the core capacities of local government. And while I respect the members of the mayor's law department and their opinions, their job really is, and this is, as they say, from their own lips to our ears many times over the years, to prevent the city from being sued, right? And so their main concern always is to protect the corporation of the government from lawsuit. That is not always the pursuit of common good and the pursuit of the good for the city as a whole, right? Sometimes we have to... Sometimes a fight is worth it. And I believe that we are kind of ideologically struggling with this, especially around historic preservation, with this kind of what I see as a more right-wing notion of private property rights versus the rights of the community as a whole and the benefit of the common good. And so, in this situation, even though it's just a motion to, I think, is it motion to... What, is it motion to recommit or is it a motion to withdraw? Thank you. That I don't... We don't actually have to take instructions from the law department. Just under our Home Rule Charter, only a city council member can actually put legislation on the table. Just a reminder, right, to everyone and to the public that even though the mayor suggests legislation, the administration actually doesn't walk in the room and put a piece of legislation on the table. It actually is only a council member who does that on behalf of the administration and that is one of the powers of this body. And nor can the Commonwealth Court, which has tried, our common pleas courts, which we've seen before in a variety of cases, including historic preservation, try to dictate to city council that they have another public hearing or they don't have a public hearing or when they have a public hearing or when they do something with legislation. And I think it just is going too far and we keep abdicating on the powers of the body. So even though I understand other members' positions and I understand the law department's reason for giving this opinion, I'm going to vote no, even on the motion to withdraw because I think that it's time for us to start talking about where we draw the line. We're not functionaries that take orders from other bodies of government and we're the representatives of the people and we need to, I think, sometimes stop and talk about what's right for the whole and not what's right for some individual's profit or some individual's rights to be the whole. So, thank you for letting me have that speech. It was weighing on me all evening. I'm so glad I got here to deliver it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Burgess.
So, with all due respect to Councilwoman Gross, I will at least push back a little bit on the right-wing conversation. I am not a right-wing person at all.
You sound like it sometimes.
No, I am an African-American male who has experienced the tyranny of the majority. And so, because of that, both in my life and even here on council, I have seen the tyranny of the majority, of those majority members who have sometimes misguided, incorrect views, yet they win. And I have seen that in historic designation. Just because you have the majority doesn't make you right. The majority of the country did not have women's right to vote, but that was wrong. The majority of the country did not let African-Americans vote, that was wrong. Majority of the country had African-Americans enslaved, that was wrong. So simply being a majority doesn't make you morally right. And in my case, a person who buys a home and buys that home fairly and within the rights of the city has every rights, every right to use that property as long as it's legal in their own best pursuit. And after the fact, 20 years later, without my approval, without an individual's right, a community gets together and decides that they don't like what you're doing because they don't like it, because they have some majority or higher learning, I think is wrong. I really believe in property rights. And the reason I believe in property rights, unfortunately, is because I saw this youth my first year on council to do an extraordinarily racist thing. A church wanted to expand its services to the North Side and council voted to make it historic so that church could not expand, it could not provide resources to block poor people on the North Side. And I saw it, I experienced it, I read it and from that moment to this moment, I have had a visceral reaction to it because I saw it. I saw us make the Pacific Arena and I voted against historical designation, that's fine. It is... But I also said it was the most historical, it was one of the most historical pieces on the planet. It was absolutely historical. So, my point is, we do it haphazardly. If you have enough money and power, you can get a favorable decision. This decision, this process is fatally flawed. I will go back and say it over and over again. The only fair thing, in my opinion, is this. If the city designates something historic over an owner's desire, they are robbing them of their property rights and they should be required to pay them, if asked, full market value for that property. This is a seizing. This is no different than if I come to your house, if I come to your house in Highland Park and decide, because the majority of us want it for a different purpose, and seize it. It's the same thing. We are robbing, we would be robbing individuals of property rights. I am not, I am not right-wing, but I am, though, as an African-American and in these times, we see the police are the majority of having power, but they don't always do the right thing. And so simply having the majority is not at all a sense of right. The sense of right has a moral and ethical connotation and again, I'm not pushing, I don't disagree with your... I agree that, you know, for those who are... for those who are, who love historic things, I understand their perspective. But I don't, I'm just pushing back on the caricature of my position being right-wing. It is not right-wing. It is, it is rooted and grounded in my experience as a minority in this country. And we, you know, we have to go back from, you know, we had a person today talking about the Native Americans. We don't have to even go back that far of talking about stealing lands from them. We have a history of our country, or the lower, or the hill, or forcing, you know, African-Americans from, 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 from the, from the Lower Hill. I mean, we have a history of this. And so for those of us who are weary of the rule of the majority, that does not make us right-wing, it just makes us, because we have differing experiences, that's all.
Thank you, I see you, Councilwoman Gross. We're still on first round. Councilman Wilson, discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, you know, I've been working on this for some time, and I was, you know, I was of the mind of, to, to work with council in the past to make sure that this property was saved, and I still feel that we should save this property. Although I do feel that the Reverend is completely accurate in his, in his feelings and, and, you know, property and what we should, you know, what we should be aware of, of how property was taken, and what that looks like, and the history of, of, of people's rights being taken away from them. I completely agree that that is a terrible history. You know, on my end, on the North Side, I've seen the, the North Side cut up in a lot of different ways, and, you know, what the state has done, what other entities have done in tearing down property and putting in highways and destroying neighborhoods and further, further, further destroy what would have been a vibrant, or what was a vibrant community. And, you know, although I was definitely willing to press forward with every effort to save this property, after reading the, the, after reading everything that law had sent us and seeing past judgments that have been, you know, in this, in this, in this same, in the same effect, like basically, once it passes the 120 days, you know, there is that, there is this, this gray area that's within our ordinance that it seems that it must be corrected. Either we make a decision as lawmakers to vote so that we do not move this down the road where we put ourselves at risk of, of, of being in court and spending taxpayers' money. And so I, I just feel as a responsibility of being a legislator that, that we should take law's opinion on this and move to withdraw, and that we look forward to the future of other legislation and make decisions prior to the 120 days, whether it's good or, whether, whether we agree with it or not. I'm going to make it my, my priority to, to, to not be within this, in this scenario again. So, I just wanted to make those, those two points, thank you.
Thank you. On first round, any further discussion? Seeing none, second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Councilman Burgess, I think you and I really have talked before offline about historic preservation, and I would be happy to talk more. I do think there's some path forward that we all need to take, including as Councilman Wilson just suggested, there really needs to be some cleaning up of the ordinance, but understanding that we need to respect our history and not just erase it as we erased it in the Lower Hill, as we erased it in East Liberty under urban renewal. This is a kind of market-based urban renewal that's happening right now, and that speculators will just buy up and tear down anything, because demolition is far too easy, and it doesn't build the city that we want to build. And so, as I've said many times, and other pressures of speculation in my district, watch out, because you don't know if your district's going to be next. Not right, so when, you know, pushing for inclusionary zoning, other parts of the city weren't seeing the high-priced multi-unit, the luxury pressures of luxury rents, but you don't know when it's going to come next, or the flipping of houses, flipping them from being low-value rentals with many units in them to being very, very high-priced single-family units. So those, I think those pressures will be coming to other parts of the city. And also, I'm sorry, to just be a little bit argumentative here this morning, but Councilman Burgess is a very learned and sophisticated practitioner of rhetoric. And Councilman, I never talked about the majority, and your entire premise of your argument and your position was based on the tyranny of the majority, which I respect, but I did talk to about the common good. And I do believe, back to your initial experience, your first year on council, that that expansion of that church to provide services to the minorities or to other people in need on the North Side would be in support of the common good and should have been supported. And so you put words in my mouth, and I just wanted to clarify the record.
Mr. Chair, can I have second round when it's my turn?
Second round, Councilman Gross.
Thank you. I've searched my email diligently. I have nothing from law in terms of a legal opinion on this case. Not sure how I got missed, but Madam Clerk, could you toss that over to me, please? Thank you very much.
So we have a motion to withdraw on the table. Can we do a roll call vote? Yes, please.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Kraus.
No.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Strasburger. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, Chair.
Aye.
Eyes five, nose two.
The motion is affirmed to withdraw. Thank you. That takes us to our next committee of the day, which is Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have one deferred paper, Bill 521.
Bill 521, resolution repealing, amending, and reenacting Resolution Number 18, which authorize and erect the Bureau of Cable Communication, Department of Public Works, broadcast all of council's regular legislative sessions, standing committee meetings, setting forth the responsibilities of the Department of Innovation and Performance with respect to meetings of city council and to reflect various changes in the city's departmental organization structure and other changes to reflect technological innovation since 1983.
Motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held four weeks. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have three deferred papers, Bill 192.
Bill 192, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official soil facilities plan for the Villas at Winter Park and Haxtown Street Extension.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I'm all motion to approve a discussion and defer to Councilman Kraus. We were trying to connect and get it, didn't get a chance, thank you.
I, I apologize, I should have been more mindful. Could you please make the motion to hold for eight weeks?
I'd be happy to, motion to hold eight weeks.
Thank you, I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held eight weeks. That takes us to Bill 299.
Bill 299, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a project corporation agreement for professional services with grounded strategies for the purposes of implementing a city farms pilot project in an amount not to exceed $45,000.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Thank you so much. Council members will recognize this, and I will just continue to update you. It's been about a month that we have been purchasing items for community farms on public parks throughout my district, and I wish I had photos I could just hold up for you in my sophisticated technology here of the huge harvest I've shared with some members that we've seen, tiny pots, not huge farms, like we're going to see in other parts of the city, I hope. But still, one of the things that is falling short under our normal procurement process are the kind of labor power support for farming that some of the community gardens will need. Councilwoman Smith speaks to this often, how sometimes you kind of run it through the cycle of volunteers, where you have lots of people volunteering at a site, and sometimes it's harder to get volunteers out, and especially now during COVID, you have to kind of spread out your volunteer hours. You can't have 30 people all showing up for a two-hour Saturday work session, right? And that's the kind of normal format. And so I'm still going to let this hang on, because we're, it seems like this is a kind of specialty thing, and whether it's Grow Pittsburgh, or Grounded, or another one of the smaller groups in town that can provide that volunteer management with the knowledge of farming, basically. That's a kind of a niche that we still may be needing to do under a contract basis here, so professional services contract basis. So with your indulgence, I might need a week or two to clarify, so I'm going to motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor of the two-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held two weeks. That takes us to Bill 437.
Bill 437, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official soil facilities plan for the Fourth Condominiums 2637 through 2641 Penn Avenue.
Here I am, scrolling through my agenda, it's a little slow. I'm going to motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have a few brief meeting announcements. Briefing is scheduled tomorrow afternoon, Thursday, August 27th, at 1:30 PM, with public safety relative to policies and procedures. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM. And for public hearings and post-agendas until further notice, all meetings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Is there any announcement from members?
Just briefly, if I may, Madam Clerk, could we schedule the hearing for the historic nomination of the Blessed Mother statue at its earliest convenience? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? If not, then we need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes entered during the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
See ya.